Improvement Plan. We did that just for you.
I don't know, I never measured those tables in the.
Okay. For the record, Glenn Koppelman, 108 X of Rose in Kingston. And I'm here representing the Planning Board, who's our current Chair. And it's related to the Capital Improvement Plan. And specifically about a project that we, as the Planning Board, have decided the board that we would like to put forward under the CIP. And just so that you are all aware, when we do the Capital Improvement Plan, departments are solicited for projects. And when they submit them to us, before it gets reviewed by the Capital Improvement Committee, they're supposed to have come in for you, the Select Board, to just to make sure that you guys are aware of it, guys and ladies are aware of it. Because in years past, it wasn't that way. The problems were getting on the list, and then all of a sudden, the Select Board was not aware of it. There was a disconnect there, so. And the Capital Improvement Plan is, it's not a regulatory document, it's merely advisory, but nonetheless, it has it has implications to dolving of sense and warrant articles and budgets and expenses. So the Select Board really should be aware of it, especially since the Select Board is one of two bodies that the CIP is actually done for. The other being this particular thing, so. Susan, I don't know if, we talked about, I'm here for this specific, to make the board aware of this specific project, but if there were any other questions about the CIP in general, I'm happy to, you know, to answer them if you have some. Otherwise, we did, we did finish the CIP, it got finished late. There was a lot of fits and starts with it in the COVID timeframe. But finally, they get it up and done, and hopefully you all have had a chance to get a copy of it. Or at the very least, the spreadsheet that has the list of projects.
That's what they have in the project, so.
There's actually a whole document, a lot of narrative that goes along with it, which certainly are, you know, should be, should have access to, you know. And Susan, I know you have that.
Yeah, and it's on the website.
And it's on the website, okay. So. The project that the Planning Board discussed at its last meeting, Richard, you were there, right?
Yeah.
Was actually brought to us by the two staff people in the Planning Office, our Town Planner and our administrative assistant, who for years now have been struggling with the space issue. And it has become exacerbated during COVID because the two desks in that office are close together. And oftentimes, it's either necessary or preferred for those two individuals to be in the office at the same time. But during COVID, because of the closeness of the people in the space there, they did their best to rearrange their schedules so that they weren't there at the same time. It isn't the best situation, but nonetheless. But we're still dealing with COVID, I mean, it's, you know, it's still around, and we're still trying to be careful of it in the office. There really isn't much space to meet with people who come in with plans and want to sit down and discuss things with the planner. They do have this space, which is right adjacent to the office, the offices, for those of you who don't know, or if you're ever on, right behind the video room there. So. The thought was, when the staff brought this with the attention of the Planning Board, the board members voted to have me put together one of these work submission forms. And start with, start with at least some way to maybe study the issue and see what some of the options might be. Whether it, whether it be, I mean, actually Ellen proposed initially the thought of just like that side by expanding for the AV, possibly an expansion of this side at the current welfare office. And she was thinking that perhaps Planning Board could move into that space and welfare, which doesn't need as much space, could move into the old Planning Board office. I mean, that was one suggestion, but, you know, there are all kinds of possibilities. And I don't know if the town and other departments and you folks are looking at space needs at all. I will say that we were kind of disappointed when we found out that the old fire station was being torn down because that, you know, was a possible way for the town to have more space for offices and stuff.
Just, just for the record on that, it was in excess of a million dollars to bring it into compliance.
Oh, no, no issue, anyway, I realize that, yeah.
Well, good look back at the stage, yeah, good, but offices up here.
So, the discussion that had taken place, Glenn, was looking at a phased architectural plan for the Town Hall that could address certain office spacing constraints. Knowing that Planning has one now is helpful to that. But what that would look at is basically, just go section by section, how do we address the issues? Have someone other than a backup napkin drawing? And it would be bid, or it would be designed and bid out by phase. So, we'd do the bathrooms one year, we'd do the town clerk, obviously. And then the upstairs would probably be a joint project to help on that. So that's what this board was looking at, and has been in discussions about the past few weeks.
Yeah, one of the issues was make sure to get through the digitization of all the records first, because that will free up a certain amount of space. I mean, you've got a small little adjunct office at the Planning Board area. But we wanted to look at the whole building in its totality, and each department's needs, and then have a five-year planner now to modernize the Town Hall to meet those needs in an orderly, concise fashion, with the public knowing all along, this is what we're doing. It may not save that stage, because we need that space. You know, that's been the contention we've been before, but we need to look at the bigger picture on this one here, but appreciate the kind of floor, please.
So, I mean, if you folks are sort of looking at this globally, and for, you know, all town department needs, if you will, the question is, is there a need for this individual? Because if there isn't, there's, you know, I don't want to put something forward into the CIP that it's either going to be duplicating something, you know, and it's maybe doing a piece of what we're looking at globally, or... I think, so what we're trying to address is, you know, because we got the ARPA funding, there are townwide issues that we're trying to address, specifically phone issues, the digitization of records, those kind of things. The building is an issue that we know exists, but until we get the digitization, getting that done and seeing what the footprint looks like in the offices without, you know, 27 filing cabinets downstairs, however much space is occupied in there, that will give us a better flavor of what we need going forward. I would say personally, it'd be better to do it all jointly. Because it's gonna, it's gonna have to be, we did, you know, renovations downstairs because of COVID, and what we need to do is just look at the long term and just plan for that. So this would be something that takes the Town Hall the next 20 and 30 years, where it adequately addresses space constraints and, you know, not having a paper-based office. Okay.
So I guess we'd say, I don't think we need to do this at this point in time, but maybe next year, the board needs to put in the CIP what we want to look at, some funds to do the studies we need to reorganize the space.
I mean frankly, what we're finding right now, from surveyors to any type of contractor, we're not getting very good numbers, if we're getting any at all. And it's just not a good time for us to try and, we're focusing on the things that we can get immediately bang for our buck. But this is something that we, we do recognize it as a problem, and it's something the board is serious about addressing. It's just, it's probably not going to get done this year, obviously, being November 21st left, but. Right, I, I've got to tell you that, I mean, this has been an issue for the Planning folks for a while now, and this is the first time that we've actually brought it forward as a, you know, as a starting point to actually kind of looking at it, coming up with some possible options. So if, I mean, if you're, you know, if you're thinking that the study phase of this that you might do is several years down the road, then I would probably want to put this in anyway, just so that it's, so that there's a placeholder. If you're thinking that it's shorter term than that, then maybe we don't have to put this in, and we just make sure that we're included as part of the discussion when you're, you know, when you're working on this.
Why don't we leave it in and then replace it with a master plan if we get to that point?
Well, I don't know that I want to put something just for the Planning Board at this point in time, because the issue is bigger than the Planning Board.
Oh, yes, clearly.
And the fact that we're working on and having all our records digitized, that's going to free up some space. We're in no position to even begin to get a study or anything.
I, I think we're.
A year from now, maybe?
I would say a year from now, because basically we have a three-year timeline on the ARPA funds to utilize those. And as I said, we have these immediate concerns that we're trying to address. And then this would be something that we utilize those funds to basically come up with a plan, or at least the feasibility of making it work for everybody.
I just, this Town Hall needs major renovations, and I don't think we should be, I get your immediate needs, but we, as Select Board, have immediate needs too. But I think, I just think we should address it all with one fell swoop. Because if we look at one small portion, it, like you said, putting something there, well, how's that going to affect if we do anything else later down the road? I don't think we're looking at a long-term, two to three years, but let us get one step at a time. Digitizing is a top priority, once that gets going, because we've already remodeled twice downstairs. And it's still not out there, it needs to be done properly, okay? The, the, quick, as Phil mentioned, the sketch on the back of the napkin is not working out for us.
Band-aid effect.
And it's, and let me be clear, I mean, we had some great people donate things, and it has, it's a far better setup than we had previously. But it's just been kind of one cop-in solution after another, that thing's a nice one. You know, we need something that looks, pays to the historical aspect of the building. Nobody wants to tear down the Town Hall, but we just need to make it functional for the modern era. And it's, by doing it in phases, it's an easier burden for the taxpayers to bear. It's not like a fire station or a library or anything like that, it's something, you know, predictable and continuous. But I, I appreciate this, and I think, you know, with regards to the CIP, we're still trying to work through, you know, getting bids and everything for these things, so that it's included. You know, how the ARPA funds fall into the CIP, I guess, is, kind of changes things for us. Possibly, well, it just provides another option for, for the funding of some of the projects, perhaps. Yeah. Which, which means it, you know, on the spreadsheet, it's a place for things other than taxpayer dollars or warrant article dollars, I mean, whether, you know, things that are paid for by grants or things like the ARPA money. It would, you know, a project could be funded in part or in whole by those, and it just reduces the amount that we have to be raised by taxes, so. Which is, which is part of the whole reason of the CIP at first place, is to, is to kind of look at all these projects, look at the sources of funding, and, and see if there are ways to specialty if in any particular year, if it's slight, to try and spread things out so that the burden on the taxpayers is evened out a little bit. Okay, well, I did have one question on the CIP.
Yes.
I see on here there's $90,000 for the Nichols Historical Museum for next year for masonry work, excluding stairs and wing walls. Okay, yes. You just add, you did state that if we had questions on the CIP, this would be a good time to do it. This is the first time I'm hearing this, so I didn't realize there was more masonry work that needed to be done there after the sizable amount of money we spent last year. I can't speak to that specifically, Phil, I don't recall the details of it, which is where perhaps the narrative would explain it, because the narrative explains the projects in each of the categories, and that goes along with the spreadsheet, so.
But that doesn't mean we have to spend the money that year, because it's not in the budget.
No, this is just a, but. No, Jim, does it, I don't have it with me, does it say where the, what the source of money is?
It says basically we're excluding stairs and wing walls.
But it doesn't, no, it doesn't state the source of money.
No, it has nothing to do with funding, I don't know.
And I guess my other question is, who put this before you, is it the Chair of this museum, or is it just people involved with the museum, or?
It's part of the heritage.
Well, it would probably be the Heritage Committee, but, but again.
We'll have to, we'll have to look at the paperwork in there.
Yeah.
I would hope that would become a rich thing, I've heard of buildings in the grounds, you know.
I would think.
I just think we're having problems with who is, I hear you have a charge of things in these specific, it seems like there's six different entities speaking for one.
I'm going to talk about that later.
So I just, that $90,000 is new to me.
I mean, I thought there was something going in for the steps here, and I just wonder if that's confusion there.
Oh, I don't think so.
No, that's, I think, that's under riches, he just, the front stairs, we talked about that a couple of times.
Sorry, I didn't mean to ambush you, I just. No, no, I, while you had it in front of us, if I had, if I had brought it with me, I, I couldn't, but I shouldn't have brought it.
That's all right, we'll figure it out.
And, you know, as I tried to explain earlier on, these individual departments and projects are supposed to come before you, like we're talking now, before the stuff gets submitted to the, to the Capital Improvement Committee. We're seeing a lot of disconnects in that process, especially with that particular area. Yeah, so, so maybe we need to be the.
Vigilant.
Well, I know that, I know that, I mean, Planning Board is responsible for putting the CIP together. The committee is, consists of representatives from Planning Board, Budget Committee, and Select. But it's the Planning Board's responsibility to put it together, and we're the ones who solicit, you know, these, these projects, or the departments, or the groups. And I know that when we were having issues with the disconnect a couple of years back, the package that we sent out to each of them was very clear that they had to come to the Select Board first. But again, if they don't do it voluntarily, it's, you know, we're not, we're not really releasing it, but maybe we should. I'll bring that back to the, I'll bring that back to the group and talk about. We haven't had our first meeting yet for the, for the new CIP, which starts, starts essentially beginning of next year. But we're soliciting the projects now, and so we'll be, we'll be meeting as a group to discuss the submittals. At that time, we can, we can maybe hammer on that again, that they need to be coming before you folks. And I would say the other thing that this board owes you is, we're still gathering pricing and trying to get budgetary numbers together for those ARPA funds, but I think that probably should be things that are rolled into the CIP, because they're, you know, three-year horizon, but they're things that address some of the things on that list, so. Right, well, and again, it's a, it's a six-year, it's a six-year rolling horizon. So the next plan will be 2022. So, whatever, seven, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. And things that are intended to have a useful life of more than there's, they're a set of parameters anyway, they're typically capital projects. A study like we're proposing now in this, in this sheet that we sent in is a little different, it's not, you could still do it as part of the CIP, because it's leading up to a project that we have, that would be a capital project, that would have an extended lifespan, so. So it's, it's not for everyday, you know, office expenses and that kind of thing, that falls under the budget. These are larger capital-type projects that often are things like, you know, vehicles, buildings, significant projects. Okay, we have a Planning Board meeting tomorrow, and I will report back to my board about what we talked about here. Richard, you can, you can back me up with whatever, whatever I might miss. And I'll, I'll tell them what your wishes are, and we'll see what, we'll see what direction I get after that. How's that?
Very good.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Glenn.
Thanks.
Next appointment is Matthew Dorman.
So I've looked through a question this session, and.
For what reason?
91A, breathing, see?
You're going to have to speak up some.
Matters having to, that negatively affects the water reputation.
Point of order, if we're going to go non-public, I'd rather just, if we did it after, instead of breaking up the meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'd go through the rest of our meeting and do it at the end.
Typically, because this is a televised meeting, we either do non-publics before the meeting, or at the end. So if you are requesting that, we'll have to run through our meeting, and then we can meet with you at that end point.
I did request ahead of time that it be non-public, but.
That doesn't change the facts of that situation. So if you want to do that?
Yeah, sure, when, when, when do you expect to be done with your regular reception?
I always hope eight o'clock, that's my dream every Monday. All right. The two other appointments aren't here.
They might be downstairs, she had me, you know, that she left the door open down there, somebody was waiting, maybe she fought for us.
Okay.
There was a post standing on the front steps.
On the front steps, maybe that's them.
Normally, they think 7:30, that's what they've done every time.
You want me to?
Let them in.
Sure.
Tell them they missed their appointment.
Or you could just wait.
I would stick around.
And stay public session.
Yeah, that was quicker.
If it grows faster, you can be here faster.
Our way. Here's sheets on our new, both, some of them new, those. These.
Look at Wilder.
God, you brought a lot in.
Did that one just walk away?
It's a strength in numbers.
Okay, well, since Mr. Wilder isn't here, we'll go to Mr. Dufrain.
Jim Dufrain, Archer, South Kingston, meeting. This is Charlie Zolch, this is Seacrest.
Mark, are you going to come out for the meeting?
Mr. Wade's going to come out, Mr. Wade's in a button-trimmed pink house. I know some go inside it. I'm here just to ask if the cease and desist has been lifted on the project.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, all, all the work is done with the drainage. Was that, oh, it had been done to release the cease and desist.
I, I thought it was, we were waiting on the site plan, it had to be, the Planning Board has to decide that the site plan is up to, up to date. I thought it was.
Would you like to respond to that, Mr. Zolch?
Yeah, we did the, just, Mark just finished the work a week or so ago. We got out there, we did all the locations, we're putting the site plan together. But everything is basically per plan, or per field change is approved by the down changer. So the work is done, everything's been put in place.
So typically, when we put a cease and desist in place at the request of the Planning Board, we remove the cease and desist at the request of the Planning Board. Because basically, that would state that everything, all the conditions have been met for the Planning Board, for us to remove that.
And as of last week, they were waiting for the cover sheet to be changed from 33 to 34, which has been talked about, and will be talked about again tomorrow night. That's why I think they haven't sent a recommendation to do so.
Would you like to respond, Mr. Williams?
Well, I, I can all be, make sure before I do the work, I'm going to get paid, and I get paid was this house was going to get released and be sold. And obviously, that didn't happen. We talked about releasing them, and then I went ahead and did the work, and right now, I have to go attach all the property.
I, I thought we released everything but the two.
No, the two were part of it, because it was everything was said, that the two were going to get released, and I think, so that he had the funds.
Yeah, exactly, we released two, there's four total, we released two.
Hey, I'm still stuck, I'm, now I'm holding the money, and I sat, made sure I came to be, just to, you know, to make sure that things were going to be done so that I could get paid. And now I'm the only one out. Because they can't get sold.
Mr. Wade, would you like to comment?
I've lived next to the birdhouse, as we refer to it in the association, for three years. I've watched this illustrious group try their best to be accommodated, but it falls far short of anything I've ever seen in any time. And Mr. Wilson, if you don't talk at the microphone, nobody's going to understand you. Last week's meeting could not be understood at all, and it was replayed.
Talking right into the microphone.
Put it up next to you. And don't sit back and talk to them.
Okay, thank you, excuse me, sir. Listen, I, I think, excuse me, sir, I think you're ignorant of the facts of some of this situation. So, I would caution you to not accuse him of anything. The fact of the matter is, you know what needs to be done, the cover sheet needs to be changed from 34 to 33.
Do you mind if I apply for a permit for the sidewalk, is that being issued or not?
It is.
On what lines should be issued? Land unit four, eight bank grass circle?
Robert and I have talked about this in detail, and we both kind of feel that this should be permitted because it's going to get rid of a ice floor. Maybe I want to leave that ice floor after Ben was told that my intentions were to come.
So I guess my question is, if you're issuing a permit to side, land unit four, eight bank grass circle, but you're not going to issue a permit to finish the house at land unit four, eight bank grass circle?
We're going to call it.
Does it exist, or does it exist?
We're going to call it eight bank grass circle.
That's land unit four.
Lot four, lot 20, we're going to refer to it as the address of the house.
So we'll put this in simple terms, you sue the town, you sue the town.
I was saying.
Okay, one of your affiliates sued the town, and in that case, the judge specifically stated that you lost a lot.
No, the judge said you cannot go lot 20 across the street, and because he said that, I felt the hole, I broke up the foot, and felt the hole.
Okay, the town's position is that you have 33 lots in this development.
Sorry, bud.
The town's position is that you have 33 lots in this development.
Judge, respond to that, Mr. Zolch.
Honestly, when I was going through the Planning Board CRC process for the improvements to the roadway, the only thing that I was, that was requested of me was to remove where we showed that lot 20. I don't remember the conversation being, reduce it from 34 to 33 lots.
At their last meeting, the Planning Board reaffirmed that that was the case. So I would recommend that you discuss that with them.
So the cease and desist has not been lifted on the project, but will give me a permit to side the house on land unit four, eight bank grass circle, is that right?
I'm in favor of getting the house sided, because it would be reported.
I mean, Mr. Wade would like to see it, he's side.
I, I don't think anyone here has an issue with beautifying the neighborhood after what's been going on there.
But, but what, what address is that being issued for?
You would have to talk to the building inspector about that.
Well, I think we've met with the building inspector. It says, oh, Mr. Wilson, comment.
Are you running the meeting now, Jim?
What?
Are you running the meeting now?
I'm just asking you to comment.
Okay.
I apologize.
If you have a specific question, what is it?
What address is the siding permit being issued for?
It's been issued for the Tyvek House.
There you go. I think the pink house. It's the pink house.
I call it the Tyvek House or the pink house.
The inside.
The application says eight bend grass circle.
It also says the lane.
And then it says calling that lot four is fine if paper trail is clear, twenty is four now in the records. Because twenty got moved across the street to four.
I, I'm having a problem with the shell game. And, you know, I think you're seeing people are willing to give the side the house, okay? After that, the rest of it needs to go to the planning board. And if I could take it over right now and keep going and talking about the siding, I wouldn't have sided. But the recommendation from the building inspector is to allow that house to be sided. And I'll stick with the Tyvek.
That's eight bend grass circle.
That's what the application says. That hasn't been verified.
That's not.
You filled in the application, right?
Yes, I did.
So I hope you put the right address.
I hope I did too.
But while we're reading his notes, siding only, no interior or certificate of occupancy until site plan is corrected.
For eight bend grass circle. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Dorman?
No.
Mr. Wade?
Just discussing with this group. You guys think it's funny? It's not.
I think it's funny because you haven't been involved in all the process.
I watched and listened and I read your minutes. It's strange how your minutes don't follow what was actually said. Especially at the June sixth or seventh meeting. I was on the Zoom call. At that time, we indicated that both houses that had been built but not finished would be allowed to be finished. Something happened and was never mentioned.
Is there anything else, Mr. Dufrain?
At every time, somebody would ask about the siding.
Okay, you're getting the siding permit. That's it, just for the siding.
What do you guys have to offer? I don't know about that.
I don't believe so.
And you can't tell them because I don't know who guys have got behind the door. So can you answer me those questions?
I'm not gonna answer anything.
I didn't think so.
Okay.
You want your neck and neck.
Sir, sir, you're not on the appointment. That was nice of Mr. Dufrain to bring you up, but his business is concluded here.
He drove up and.
Okay, and we have a public, we have a public comment section coming up, so if you'd like to make a comment at that time, you're more than welcome to.
So you're gonna allow the siding permit to be issued for eight bend grass circle in Kingston, New Hampshire?
Yes.
That is correct.
So that's, does it have to be? Oh, I should, I apologize. I should, does that, does that leave void?
I can't. I make a motion.
Not to my knowledge. I mean, he just wanted clarification.
Well, except there is a cease and desist on the property. So we ought to confirm to allow the siding to take place at eight bend side circle and we will confirm.
Eight bend grass, I apologize.
Yeah, we will confirm that that address is right.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Abstain.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Mr. Wilder?
Hi.
Hello. What can we do for you?
So, yes, we're asking a very specific for the prior cease and desist relating to thirty-four, one twenty-five is really just to confirm that all steps have been accomplished so that construction can proceed. And that the town doesn't believe that something's left to do that would implicate that prior cease and desist. And so stormwater plan is in place, or sorry, permit is in full, AOT permit, driveway permits, bond is in place. So the last week, before, it's a new week now, there was the pre-construction meeting with the select board. One of the questions I asked there was, was it just the bond pre-construction meeting? And then the inspection, the town engineers, the final steps in place to proceed with construction. That's what the select board indicated. Those have been done. The town has the final IR, spent a planning permit since March. Gave them an updated check, so the dates, current that they can record it. So we believe that all steps that are now in place, that there is no reason for the town to have a cease and desist related to thirty-four or one twenty-five.
My question is, did we decide if it's a bond or a letter of credit?
It's done. It's been approved.
What is it?
It's a letter of credit, right. I didn't say the last, but I got word from Ellen and Cindy both that it was proven summer. Because it had to be done twice or three times to get it right for summer. As far as I'm aware, everything is done at this point. But it may be. Do we need to wait the planning board to confirm all that?
Yeah, that's sort of would be the step. As you pointed out in the last one, once it's in place, we wait for the planning board to tell us that it could be lifted.
Yeah, to my knowledge, all the conditions have been met. And I'm looking at the planning board chair and he's giving me a nod, so I'm gonna take that as if. So the one thing I would tell you, Mr. Wilder, in case you didn't hear our attorney last week, you have used up your goodwill with the town of Kingston. I mean, if there's something you're unclear on in the plan that you reached with the planning board, you should call someone and ask for clarification. Because if something takes place, negative intent will be the assumption on our part. And we're not playing any longer.
Me neither. I mean, if there's a question up there, I'll call the town engineer.
I hope you do. And I.
I would.
I really don't. Contrary to what everybody thinks, I really don't like seeing people in here again and again and again and again. I wish you well. I hope we don't see you again.
Probably not.
With that, I make a motion that we remove the cease and desist from Fieldstone Meadow Realty LLC.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post?
I'll oppose.
Abstain. Motion carries.
Thank you all for your comment.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
No, I voted yes.
There was no abstentions. That will bring us to our first public comment of the evening. Seeing no public moving forward. Committee liaison reports.
Couple things. You told me to check into the library's urgency for the computer.
That's the library?
I mean, you're right, museum, which I did. They planned on putting that in next year's budget to replace that computer. But after Block Five came in at the request of Cindy to see what they needed to do, Block Five said it's more of an urgency. It's Block Five that said, if it's turned off, it may not be able to come back on because of several things with it. They were told that they should move this up due to the funding and to see if we had any place to pull the money from in this year's budget instead of putting it in next year's, which we've encouraged a lot of people to do. So that's why it was brought forward to spend it in this year's budget. At the same time, I talked to the group and have a meeting with them Friday at three thirty with the members of the museum committee and the Friends Museum.
What about Heritage?
Heritage does not want to join as part of the overall group and he thinks there's an RSA that says it can't. It's two different tasks.
What about the other two computers they have?
Oh, the other two computers were because of that malware that attacked them. With the ransom and everything else.
I thought that's why we got them because of.
We did. But those are small computers and the other ones, the master computer does all the scanning and everything else. So.
This, they were. I don't see, they had the malware issues, that's why we got the new computers. So they had two.
That's kind of like we get the computer to replace Cindy's downstairs or something. That we don't put near as much on it. This computer's got a lot of memory for all the scanning and everything they do. It's a lot bigger and better.
They could put it, they have every right to put it through their budget and.
Which is what they were gonna do.
Then I think they should still do that. I'm not gonna give in on this one. Absolutely not.
Okay, there's this group that said we need people to pull as much as they can out of this year's budget instead of putting it in next year's. That's why they made that step. So if you want it next year's budget, that's where to go. The other sheet I gave out is the fees that we're talking about changing to. So just sometime between now and next week, look at it, see if you have any comments. He slid it over to you. You may have to put it face down. I got another one if you need it.
So I guess I gotta go back to that computer thing. So this stuff in the hard drive, if they shut it off, it might not stop. So why can't they be taking, transferring it now? Why can't the two computers?
They don't have anything because the computer has two computers. Now, I understand they're very small, not much memory, therefore looking up one or two things at a time.
They can get an external hard drive. You could buy an external.
Block Five told them not to do that, not to go that route. So I don't know. I've checked into this three times. I'm done. If you guys want it in next year's budget, that's where to go.
Yeah, it's, I can't, it's, none of it's making sense.
Okay.
So if you can look through this sheet, if you have any comments or anything.
What's this for? These are fees for the inspector's fees?
Inspector fees. Just to give you an example, the one that I know about, the health department. This year, we have taken in five thousand, five thousand eighty-five dollars. And we've spent in salaries ten thousand. So we're almost double the fees we're taking in and that's why the fee for septic is can go from a hundred to two hundred dollars. And it's gonna be collected different because right now, how it's set up and has been forever, we don't charge for a test pit. We charge when a plant is turned in. So if somebody has a test pit for a house and decides not to do it or somebody else does it, we lose out on that money. And people in the past have made more as health inspectors, so it was more of a loss when we were doing work without a fee.
So Rich has done a lot of work on this. There's a lot of things that weren't addressed previously, sprinklers, mini splits. It was a newer technology that wasn't encompassed under that. This also, the board had agreed that our electrical and plumbing inspector who were on call, they were getting paid twenty-five dollars in inspection. This moves that up to fifty, which still doesn't even cover the cost of a master electrician for an hour. So I feel that's something that needs to go into effect.
They, like on the deck, the three fifty per thousand, is that thousand square feet or thousand dollars?
Thousand dollars.
So you, so they have to submit a plan or an estimate?
Typically, when someone comes in with a permit for a deck, say, Robert will ask them what is the estimated cost of it. And that's typically how we've issued permits in the past. If you're doing a renovation or an addition or something like that, it's based on the cost of it. And he's quite adept at getting people to recognize the true value of what they're doing.
And the example on sheds, why did twelve to twelve or less? Because we've had people come in and take out a shed permit that turned into a garage or an office building or heating and conditioning. You know, that people are taking it well beyond what the intent of the permit was.
She didn't believe me on the subject, Bart. We did it.
Can I just ask, so if someone's gonna put in a fireplace, does that come under, where does that come under?
I mean, as far as who permits it?
Yeah, or, yeah.
That's still being worked out because we're finding that more and more needs to come under the plumbing permit procedure and not the fire department. Because of state laws. And we're addressing some things that have never been addressed, like combustible air and things like that because.
I guess I'll ask this question. So you got wood stove, you got pellet stove. That's for, that inspect, what about the chimney? Like, is there a separate one? Because you're gonna run that up. Because I don't see a chimney on.
Maybe not. Some pellet stoves went right out the side of the hallway.
No, I understand they do, but if you are gonna run it straight up.
Then there'd be a flu fee sometime.
Okay.
Might need to be added. That's down the common.
Yeah, that's what I'm just trying to figure out. In a fireplace, meaning a chimney all the way up and all that stuff.
What we try to do is look at things and say, how many inspections do they take to pass and base the fees off that? So we weren't losing money like we have been in the past. Because it's not supposed to be a moneymaker, but it's not supposed to be a loser.
Cover the cost.
Right.
It is so people do it legally and safe for the insurance and everything else. We're not looking to make money on it just to cover the cost of the inspection.
Right.
And this is our bigger ticket items that Rich focused on. It's a work in progress, but we had to start somewhere.
No, I think it's a great thing. I think, I commend all the units for working on this. I just, again, I want the people to understand this isn't to make money for the town. This is just to keep everyone safe.
I rely on the judge. I wouldn't know what was fair and not fair from relying on the judge.
Some of them went up very little and some of them were added. I mean, the septic doubled, but we're still well below most towns in the area.
I don't even see the septic on here.
On the bottom. But again, we found out that we were losing because we were going out there four times and, you know, wasn't covering the cost of the person going out.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing that's new here was a dumpster permit. Because that allows us to know when someone is undertaking renovations and it's a pretty obvious thing. It's cheap, it's twenty-five bucks. It's not a moneymaker for the town. It's just so we're able to keep an eye on that.
That's the actual physical dumpster, as opposed to the bag you can get from waste management for twenty bucks to fill up.
It does a couple things. It also lets us say, hey, you're putting it on the neighbor's property or too close to the neighbor.
Yep.
And it puts a timeframe on how long it can be there.
Yep.
So it can't be a permanent structure on the house, which we have a few places in town that have done that.
And the other side is if it's blocking emergency services. We've had that as well, where people are just drawing a dumpster in the way and.
I think that, whether the new code enforcement office is gonna have a, it's gonna be a lot of work in progress to get people to understand. So I don't think people would even think that this dumpster permit, all that stuff.
Well, there's a lot of, I mean, I found out the other day, you're supposed to have a permit for a hot tub.
For what?
A hot tub. And I never knew that. I mean, there's several things that have come up and, you know, the other side of this is Tori has caught a tremendous amount of things going on in town by looking at real estate ads and everything else that has really helped keep up with things.
Yeah, Tori has done an amazing job on that. We've caught, I wanna say, four or five people who.
Four or five major.
Yeah, just, guy had put in a whole renovation in his house, didn't put one single permit and was gonna sell this house without any permits in place. Another person who would put an illegal septic tank in and an illegal apartment. And, you know, I know some people will find this to be trivial, but if it's an illegal septic tank, you really don't want that going in if he's your neighbor, you know? So, you know, these do have a reason we're putting them in. But, um, I would move that we schedule a hearing for the updated fees. So we can receive any public inputs, if people can have a chance to say that, and then that way we can put this into into place.
And I'll give, I'll give this out tomorrow night at Planning War too, just so if they have any.
How about if we post it on the website too, just saying, you know, new new fee, permit fees and list to date, we're gonna hold a public hearing.
Genius, I'll second that motion.
Thirty days out?
Then we need an effect, effective date, whether we wanna go January first or sooner.
I think if we did a a he, public hearing thirty days out.
That'd be December first.
Yeah, so then January thirty-first is the effective date, I think that basically.
First or thirty-first?
January first.
January first, yeah.
And you said thirty-first.
You said thirty-first.
I'm sorry, but I, thirty days for the public hearing and then it'll be effective January, but I'd like to see this on the on the website.
Sure.
Okay.
That's all I got. Okay, good motion of second, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, stain, okay, so we'll have a public hearing on one December, or, or post this meeting there too?
Uh, let's see, this or sixth would be the Monday, you wanna before that then, cause you wanna pull one? Yes, we do.
I I did just, you know, somewhere in there.
The last Monday in November, twenty-eighth?
I think it's the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Let's go with that.
December twenty-seventh is the last Monday.
But in November, it's the the hearing.
Oh, in November, it's twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
And.
And Susan, if we can just put a copy of this on the website, just and and just put.
Let me make a couple of directions to you before you do.
I have a couple things to.
Lay it on.
Okay, um, I met with Cindy and Graham and Ellen Faulkner and reviewed the employee evaluation form. As soon as I get our revisions or our suggested changes back from Cindy, I'll pass it along to you as for your review.
Excellent.
So that's already done, and we've scheduled a meeting for next Monday, um, with Kevin, myself, Cindy and Graham on the personnel policy. We're gonna review that this week individually, make, review the suggestions that have been submitted by a couple of the employees. And then we'll meet next Monday and review that as well, and then send you any updates accordingly, okay, so you can take a look at that. Um, I've talked with Eric Chenberg on the Seymour Seminary, and he had asked about the right procedure to let people know what he's got going. And he's appearing at the historic district commission on November tenth. He sent me copies of the renditions and what they're gonna propose, which looks outstanding. I asked to send you a copy to distribute the board, but you didn't already.
Uh, I didn't.
He didn't say anything about distributing the board?
No, I thought it was.
Um, well, it really should wait until the historic district should, um, see it that night and then distribute it to the board for their information purposes. He wants to be with it, it it's at the beginning stages, and he's not gonna have the type of signing or whatever on the building, but it looked really nice, so. That's coming down the pike, and I got a text from Rick Russman asking about solar, and I also. Put a nudge in with Tom Ambrose about solar panels. He made a reference to, well, we'd be interested in participating as long as we can put our own solar panels on school buildings. I don't know what he means with that, but I think we need to put together a task force to move forward if we're gonna look at. Going with solar on uh land, on the landfill, we need to start the process soon, I don't know if you wanna wait till the first of the year, but. At least put a group together, I know Rick is, Russman's interested, I know that Glenn Copelman has said he'd be interested. Maybe a couple of community members, other members, someone from the board and and the school district. So, I just wanna kinda bring that around to you guys.
I'd be interested in sitting on it as well, um, I don't think you want it too big, maybe sixes, seven, I don't know. But I'd take one person from the school would absolutely say, you know.
I probably still gotta reach out to the school finance chair, cause they, I'm not sure where Tom Ambrose is going with this.
I don't think he understands what the project is.
I I don't think he does either, to be honest, I don't think he looked at the, at the attachments from the proposal from revision. And revision is just one potential service provider.
Yep.
Um, you know, you know, I know they want the job and I don't doubt that at all, but that's not necessarily who's gonna be handling the project. And we probably have at least another year, year and a half of work to do before we can do anything to the, for the town. And it won't be this district meeting, but maybe a year from now.
Hmm.
To be able to put something forward, cause it's gonna take some time to look into and look at the options, then it may not be something we decide to do, I mean, that's. We we don't know at this point, but we won't know anything until we at least get the group going and start some of the homework, so to speak. That's why I'm bringing it forward to.
It's only eleven million dollars.
Well, it's eleven million dollars we don't have, but it might be able to recoup some money, but, you know, again, as I talked about. As revision talked about, we could end up with an investor or we could self-fund, we don't know that, we have no idea what we're gonna do, and we may not do it at all.
Yeah, it's all different options, if someone needs to sit down and figure out all the different options.
So you're interested in that?
I'd be interested in that, thank you.
Okay. Anything for you guys?
Uh, I'm gonna loan one of our ATVs to the conservation commissioner, who's the board has an issue with it.
You loaned out one of the, one of our ATVs to?
One of my ATVs to, uh, to the conservation.
Oh, okay, what would they do, working on a trail?
Is it just temporary there, or?
As long as they need it.
Are they all trained in ATV safety?
Most have been, yeah.
Just concerned about the liability, that's all?
By the way.
I see some irony in ATV's on a lot of the trails, but, but you know, this one can.
Probably need to haul this stuff.
I know, it is.
I meant to tell you all too, that the, uh, the friends in the library held the the jack-o'-lantern jaunt last Thursday. They had a hundred and forty people participate.
I think it was more than that, actually, I was there.
Oh, was that right, yeah?
And somebody came in and said they had a hundred and eighty go through.
They, it was really quite well received, yeah, so.
I wasn't there for that, I had a heritage meeting, so.
Um, just like net recreation for a couple of different things, um, Paul is working diligently on a grant for the. Um, playground and, uh, just budget stuff and everything else, but other than that, the budget, there is another budget meeting Wednesday night.
On the playground committee?
No, 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 on budget committee meeting, the playground, I was just, I've been meeting a lot with Paul for the, for that.
Cause he knows nothing about it, we told him, shouldn't we be notifying people?
Yeah, I was gonna, so anyway, the nineteenth of November, I already talked to Paul, he's gonna be handling that. Um, as far as the recreation side of things, setting up some games, and, uh. We're gonna get a flyer drafted up for that, I was hoping to get over there today to work with Susan on that, but. Um, I'll probably have Ellen get most of the basic stuff on one of her grocery runs for welfare, as far as burgers and hot dogs. And then put appetizers and desserts to any employees who'd like to bring those to the cookout, um, we'll be doing it at the highway bar.
We're doing it the nineteenth, you said?
Yeah, Friday, the nineteenth.
So yeah, that'll be going out to everybody, I just wanted to make sure we had the key people lined up there, so it's in process. Um, I did wanna approach the select board, I figured we could handle the cooking, since it's our event that we're showing our appreciation to our employees.
I don't know how to cook.
Okay, well, you can hand out potato chips.
Well, you can't cook anything small, was what you meant to say, right?
Well, I would think that's pretty small, I've already volunteered to do an eighteen quart thing of chili.
Excellent.
Nice.
So that's what I was figuring, is just basics, like hot dogs, hamburgers, maybe some sides, and then.
What time was?
Uh, I believe it was eleven.
We said eleven, town hall closes at twelve, so, but.
But Paul will have some games going and.
I have quite a bit of equipment that'll come in handy.
So, that's where we're at on that. Uh, old business, I thought we decided the last meeting that the preambulation, we were just gonna hold off on until things had kinda settled down and we could get some updated numbers.
I made a call to, um, the ES just to ask them who to call, and they're gonna check into it, let me know, because I'm gonna try to find out if this is. Something everybody's still doing or not, cause I've heard both, I've heard that some are doing it and some aren't, some haven't done it in twenty years, so. It it's a law from, what would say, eighteen eighty-five or something?
Did you know if it's still there?
Yeah, it's still there, but it was made for the day when you had arguments over where a lawn was, or a house was built in the middle of it, or.
Well, let me ask this question, if, I mean, unless it's the property audience, you would know what they are, they already exist, like. Convergent lines, no one coming in now to build the property is gonna have half an eye rate.
What about the water place out there on one eleven, because half that property was in East Kingston, half is in Kingston, so there may be a question about where that line is.
But, well, I would say that's a good time for them to pay for a survey.
Right, but the process, I'm understanding, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but when they do it this next time. They would GPS coordinate everything, so the next time it'll be simple. It'll be, you know, spot the coordinates and draw the line and message.
That's, you know.
I mean, it's on our CIP for.
It is, yeah.
Twenty twenty-six. Um.
That was probably based on it being done this year.
Freshen, I would be curious if we can see what Rich finds out from the ES now, but, you know, I'd love to do it, but I just had to come. You don't know where you go, and the last one that did it was Rich, and, you know, I mean, I think we need to have it plotted exactly as you said. And I don't wanna wait till twenty twenty-six, but I wanna do it this year, next year, we got enough stuff going.
I mean, to remind everybody, we did put this out for bid and we got zero bids.
Zero, no, I agree.
The other thing though is we have other towns, I think four, that have come forward and said, we'll help or we wanna talk about it.
Share the cost, yeah.
And typically you split the fee for that town, so.
It's not a bad thing, I mean, if you got four, the only one we we have to pay fully for is the one who bought an exeter, or is that correct?
No, Exeter has to pay for that, cause they're the older, they're the only one older than us.
Okay. So the other.
Or it's, it's our responsibility as the older town, and then it would be Exeter's responsibility, but.
To request it.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
So we'll hold them up a little bit longer to decide if there's any.
Well, hopefully they gave, will get back for me, get back to me and tell me what to do.
Keep it on your tickle file for now.
Yeah, the other towns are asking, so I'll just, I told them we're still figuring out what we're gonna do.
We could say we we contacted DES, is that who you talked to, is it DES?
I have talked to them, I don't think they are who does it, but they're trying to find out who to talk to about it. But it may be them, because they've got the division of land works too, and a few things like that, that they've answered questions.
Okay, uh, new business, scanning, digitizing town records.
Oh, is there a, could there be?
Guess I'll start in these hours.
I think we ought to thank Susan for this too, this took a tremendous amount of time to take all these people through every building and every. It seemed like every one of them had a different thought process and.
Well, it's like I say, we're gonna figure out who's gonna establish.
Hey, here's the bid.
Yeah, no, same thing, and that's, it's not a bad thing, and we should ask them to come with a thumb drive.
Well, this one doesn't have, no.
Okay, uh, just for the people viewing at home, this is for, uh, quotes for digitizing all of the town records. This will be covered under the, uh, ARPA funds that we've recently been gifted by the government.
I think this can be pretty complicated to read.
Yeah.
Well, what we typically do, is find the bottom line number, we'll enter that into the record, and then we'll be appointing a group to ensure they're all the same thing.
Account is slightly different, so you're gonna want to get the bottom line. As long as I want, I mean, for unit and other classes, they're adding, so we start with a bottom.
So we're gonna take again five copies.
Yeah, there should be five copies, right, all of them, yes. So you could distribute them.
So.
Yeah, it's very complicated.
Yeah, I mean.
There is a bottom line.
Yes, well, there is a mine.
I got two bottom lines.
I have five bottom lines.
Two, you have a lot of add-ons in some of these.
Well, you have equipment, um, you have some one-time fees for setup. But then, I think the big bids, what maybe we ought to look at?
Well, Troy has.
I'll give you an example of what mine has, mine has a one-time charge for pickup and delivery, setup, which they're waiving, project management. It's estimating records, images at eight hundred thousand. And basically the price is seventy-five thousand plus a four thousand and another four thousand, another four thousand for some different options.
Now, this one's a hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred.
Okay, hang on, let's go back, who was that for?
Scan tag. S C A N T E K. Eight hundred thousand images at just under seventy-five thousand.
Alright, this one is New England Document Systems, and they break it down by all the departments. And they have a bottom line of a hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars.
This is records four, and they break it down in many ways, different options. The entire scanning project estimate is a hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred sixty-eight and twenty-five cents. Like I said, there's different add-ons to this.
Okay, I have Morgan Records Management, uh, bottom line number is fifty-four thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. And then a service description or a service fee of four thousand nine hundred dollars.
So you give us this one on documents?
Uh, he has one point two million documents accounted for in here.
He's got more than this guy.
Yep. And then I have Rico, uh, their bottom line number was one oh three nine sixty, and that is for statistical quality control level.
Okay, I have Inception Technologies, I N C B E T I O N. It looks like it's for. Four hundred ninety-five thousand pieces. It has, these are one-time fees totaling fifty-nine thousand eight ninety-four. And it's broken down by service for forty-five thousand, product thirteen thousand. And it's broken down by service for forty-five thousand, product thirteen thousand, and should be eight fifty. So I, I don't know that it's as detailed as some of the others you have, but this is the proportion.
And I have one more, Susan, from GRN.
GRN?
Yep. And they have bottom line figures, a hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And they have eight hundred images, eight hundred thousand images. But the number is one oh seven five five zero.
Move the binders to-
Go to one.
So I, I'm looking at a motion that we set a committee or at least two people to review, evaluate proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second? Sorry. Danny Don, second. Further discussion?
Next, see?
Do we want two or just hand Cindy or three? What, what do you think?
Well, you can't, I mean, a former committee, I don't know you can, you can put the number, because none of us are qualified.
No, I know. If someone has to break, look at, I'm gonna break them down.
I think Susan started this, that she ought to be involved in finishing it.
I don't disagree with that. She wants to be on the whole project.
I don't mind sitting down and helping and analyzing the numbers and what's-
Yeah, I can, I can help with that.
I think they're gonna be pretty basic the same once you look at it.
I think Susan laid out pretty explicitly what needs to be done, so if they didn't beat the parameters, that's disqualification.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think some of them, when you say eight hundred thousand pages, that was the estimate in the RFP.
Right, yeah.
So they looked and found different numbers, so that's where we're gonna find a lot of discrepancies.
Okay. All those in favor of
review, evaluating-
Review, evaluating.
And recommend to this board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Stention. If she carries.
Okay.
Okay, what kind of timeframe do we want for that?
Um, what is that? What is done?
Okay.
I don't think it needs to be next week or, you know, I mean, I'm sure it'll come back within a couple of months, two months.
Well, we have, we have a timeline in terms of how long this fall to be good for, so I, I would say within the next thirty days, we should have had the opportunity.
Maybe we can pick a Friday afternoon when things are closed and go through them. That might be the best thing.
Okay. Okay, uh, any board business? Okay, brings us to our second public comment of the evening.
Just a quick follow-up while I was sitting there, uh, listening to the discussion. Uh, I went online and looked at the CIP, just going back to your question about the heritage, uh, of the New York Library. It is the Heritage Commission that has taken responsibility for coordinating, uh, that work. So they are the entity that submitted the, um, the request to the Capitol Provenment Committee and they're the ones overseeing the work. There was not a description of the masonry work, other than to say that it was the remainder of the, of the masonry work, which is, which is any masonry work outside of the front steps and the, the, what do they call them, the, the wings, the wing wall, the-
Wing walls.
Yeah, that, but, I mean, there, there's so much other masonry work on that building that, uh-
I think we did the first stage because it was where water was getting in between them.
Well, there, there was the risk that if, yeah, if it didn't be done, some of that was gonna start potentially collapsing, so that, that was made prior. But, uh, but there's a significant amount of masonry work. I, the CIP didn't detail it though. But I'm sure that if, if the Heritage Commission has been working on it, they put a number on it, they must have some details, so if you need any more information, I'm sure, I'm sure you would be there.
Okay. Thank you very much, thank you. All right, correspondence applications and purchasers. Uh, we have an appointment to the trustee, the trustees of the trust fund here. And some paid leave request forms.
I read a Brad, Brad's letter and, uh, sounds like he's recommending, recommending the person, so.
Could I just ask, I know COVID kinda messed things up, but now, I mean, are we having people come in anymore for these things or?
Uh, we really haven't, but it would probably be for the future. I think at this point, they're short-staffed a lot. So we probably wanna get this one in, in process, but maybe we can see if she wants to come in and-
And for all future ones, if you come in again, go back to that practice?
I would agree.
It's at least nice to meet them, so you know them, wouldn't you?
Yeah, that's true. That's very true.
And what was the discussion, what happened with the other two that were interested? Did one of them decide?
Yes, that's-
That's this one?
Yep.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, um, take a motion on the minutes.
So moved, I, I signed the one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, motion second, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Um, I didn't see the complaint in there.
Oh, it's in the packet.
See what? I get it. That's something I'll just, here it is. I'll just take care of it. I didn't know anything about it, even like today.
Oh, this one here that you have, yeah, I, I drove by there tonight too. Loaded, there's not a square inch of available space in that lot. It's not covered by some kind of vehicle, just so you know.
Uh, the new polls for the consolidated settlement, did they, did we send them the double polls?
Yeah, I sent them the double polls, I said, maybe you can use this, I haven't turned anything back. I, I don't know what you guys wanna do. If we don't have a solid number to give them or information, do you wanna drop that part and just leave it reduced? Do you want them to, instead of giving them good information, this handwritten?
I don't see why the onus on, is on us to tell them what polls they put in our town without poll licenses for the past seven years.
Yeah.
So if you want-
So you want them to figure it out?
Yeah, you and I can call them tomorrow.
Okay.
There is a value to the double polls too.
That's a separate thing, not even, that's another.
I see, there, there is a value to that second.
Okay.
That's, I think that's Kenyan, but-
Okay, unless there's any other items. Take a motion to go into non-public. Second?
First.
First. Okay, roll call vote.
Alessio?
Yes.
Rigs?
Yes.
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that will conclude the public portion of this evening's meeting. We have a non-public appointment. Thank you very much for joining us. Good night.